Okay, before we get started, got a public hearing on adopting of the Davenport County Road Plan. This is just a process we go through. We've already done the first reading on it and don't know if we consider a motion or not to get to it, but we could, I guess. So this is one that we done the first reading on, then the one that's half on the bridge, we got a lot to do, so I'll consider a motion to approve the Davenport County Road Plan. Motion, Donnie? Name of the board, Earl? Donnie? Boarder Earl? Ray Moore? David King? Hey, I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning, and we've got the Prejudice and Good Craft from out of the league involved and interested in the move of the county. And before we get started, I'd like to stand and go ahead and throw the sound of the word prayer right there, and I'll leave us in a minute.
God our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every blessing you give us, as we get you out of the day in the presence of one another and in your presence. We ask for your guidance, your directions, and better strength in choices and decisions as a best citizen of the county. Be with us in each and every under faith in whatever we accomplish, whether it fails about its parts, and we'll be honored, the brains, and glory for all things. Most of all, we thank you, fam, as salvation, that we can have rights and trump when this time is over. But your overestimating for the decisions, whatever we do may be done according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I'm with you, to the flag of the United States of America, and to your love for which you sent us, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever being and justice for all.
John's going to have to get the reading bill or... I'd like to invite everybody up to the elevator at 12 o'clock. We've got several people from the Department of Local Government, they're actually leaving Lock County, they're probably on the trail now, they were leaving Lock County around 9:00, 9:30 this morning. They're going to lie from Lock County over in Buckhorn and then up to the elevator. We're trying to get, we've already got a order on up there, a record up there, got a little money, we're starting RV part, but Jane Baker, he's going to be here in a little bit from the Department of Local Government, President Chris Buke, he's leading a parade, I guess, from Lock County, so just show it if you've got time, and they got that to do one right up, just maybe we can help people and let them know, we appreciate them considering the... What we're trying to do is tie these trails in together, get reading money, and we have got, I've got some woodprints, and everybody would like to look at them, and it'd be amazing if we can get all this done up there, and not if we're going to get done, we're going to get done, we just need to want to do it this often. I'd like to go encourage him, and hopefully Doug and Ryan can bring me up, and we got a foreword, we can take a foreword, but maybe some of the... We've got something that we can really move our county forward and bring a lot of interest into our county.
He just peed, dude.
I encourage you to go up there. While we're waiting, I can go ahead and start, start, or the first thing on the debate's agenda is opening the bids and warning the bids, being the project, 43 bids.
I don't need to interrupt you, I can pull me down, so I can actually name those to answer things with the agenda.
Okay, go ahead and, we're going to get them in a way.
Make a motion to amend the agenda, add some files, add some items to the agenda.
Okay.
Make a motion to amend the...
Okay.
Addams.
I'll read mine. Item number one, consideration of approval to appoint Chris Frye, fiscal court clerk, Richard Agnew, for the first 2019, at a salary of $300 per month. Item number two, discussion of the 2019 jail budget.
Uh, we don't have any, I got you, we'll, we can go ahead and do it too, I bet you're all good, but I'm not really editing it on the agenda if you want to do it. No, we did, we done, George told me so. Go ahead, we want, we need, we need the two all, go ahead and do it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, item number three, discussion of the actual action concerning road form position.
What, what, considering the road?
Road form position.
Okay.
And item number four, consideration of appoint Mitch Smith, as a new Red County Trader, for a full year term, beginning on July 1st, 2019, beginning on June 30, 2003. Classification of salary exempt, at an annual average salary of $300. I'm making a motion.
Tony Wood?
Aye.
Kevin Kinter?
Aye.
Tony Wood?
Aye.
Okay, I think they took it in. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and start, we'll go ahead and start, but number one, going to consideration of approval to Buckridge, Frye, as the fiscal court clerk, take the minutes, and pay it at $300 per month.
I'd like to give you that, George, because you have a ton of $300 too.
Okay, uh, consideration approved $300 per month to make Chris Frye the fiscal court clerk.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ray Moore? Second, but who does it say about? Tony Wood. Ray Moore?
Aye.
Kevin Kinter?
Aye.
Tony Wood?
Aye.
Boarder Earl?
Aye.
Okay, uh, number two, the jail budget. Is it for the reading, uh, to approve the jail budget, and y'all got it? Do you want to kind of explain the difference that you've got on your budget?
Yeah.
And George Earl?
Last year's budget there was $228,000, and I took over January 1st, and I read it at that number, and I have added some, 2,000, and then I bought all the...
Okay, we can see the difference, you've got it in half, so he can...
Well, the difference in half, we increased from $375,000 to $525,000. That's based on the monthly calendar. I started the felony technical program, and that's, I'll regret that down to $13,000 a year, but we'll get back to that later. And then the catastrophic program, it's a new, I reckon, have a close number, I think $15,000, and I'm sure it will be more than that. And then also, on my salary, I put it down at the last salary of $61,700, which is by law what it's supposed to be, and total of $756,000.
Okay, end of discussion.
I think we reduced that salary, we was unaware, there's a kind of lawsuit, took the Supreme Court, and...
Yeah.
I'd like to go ahead and, George.
The Supreme Court ruling, this was back in 2017, was Gary County versus Middle, where they tried to, the fiscal court had amended the salary for the new term of the new judge, and they went to Supreme Court, Supreme Court said that you cannot lower the salary of a closed county judge, um, term, term.
And that included actual counties of jails and counties without jails, right?
No, it's counties without jails.
Okay, I think that, that code for them, one thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Have you, have you told me before, was your salary 32?
Y'all had said it was 32 in April of last year.
And I've got a little bit of that in, and this is something that I've been looking at too, and in my understanding, and if it was done before, certainly in May, George was actually considered to be jail transporter, and then the case that he saw about pending there, another person finished his term, may have understood it, run one, risk one deliction, and the court awarded it to him, so what, what changes we're making here, 61 and 7, is from a jail transport officer to a jailer. Is that, is that right?
Well, in the positions that I'm saying, he was, he was elected jailer, he's a constitutional officer, so he's, he's elected in the position of jailer, just how he does it, maybe he was a transfer officer, not that I believe is the difference. I've read that case, I'll be happy to discuss any issues you guys, if you think it's fitting for the guys to take possession of it. The case says, well, the case said, it's basically the person in a closed jail, which, which, and it even says, and they're, Joe admits this, I mean, they say that the reason may not like some statements, but the fact is, is that if there is a closed jail, it's the ruling they're holding in the court for that you can't go in there and use jailers in that situation. I think I stress that, we've all talked about it so much.
Yeah, they've probably just wanted Mike Donald.
I won't go any further than that, I know we've all talked, just for us previously about the status of that case, and it's, and it's bound, it takes...
My understanding that they've been more counties than just the Garrett County that's operating all that Supreme Court decision, yeah, but aside Garrett County, there's been other jailers that have backed up and paid existing salary or, or changed.
I know that according to the head of jailers and some section, they think this is a great problem. I mean, you all have discussed, I think, a little bit about, you know, there are avenues I've discussed with people as well, I'm sure we'll have new form, given of all that, is that, you know, basically unless you guys are willing to accept it, to do, then you would have to challenge it, and that there's always damages involved there, if he is the winner, if he were to prevail at any time in court suit, so that you guys, I encourage you to go ahead and address it, without us picking that up in the next meeting.
I don't think that'd be necessary, I think, if he's, that's what it is, that's what it is.
Okay, consideration approval and a motion to approve the first reading, changing the budget for previous year, $628,000, $756,000, as George suggested.
Do we, do we actually have a first reading on that?
Uh, I think so, George, the first reading has to be by...
By April 30th.
April 30th.
We should have already submitted, but, but, like, April 1st, we already said, but... Well, my question is, can we go ahead and pass the budget? I mean, I don't think Scott's going to deal with this.
I think, I think you go ahead and put that down, if there's, it requires second reading.
Yeah, especially me, in the opinion.
We got, we got a tad into the, the business, but, you know.
I think it's just like the other...
So you're just making a motion to go ahead and accept the...
Because you just scored in through. I'll make the motion.
Okay, you're making a motion to go ahead and approve the budget, until it proves the reading.
2019 jail, say.
Hey, motion made by Tony Wood, second, Ray Moore? Ray Moore?
Aye.
Kevin Kinter?
Aye.
Tony Wood?
Aye.
I'm not, I think we've done that, or to get a hard, besides, I can do what it is, just get it. I like that a lot.
Uh, do we have to do a budget on, when we do that, when we do a budget?
Well, now, here's a good question, I'm going to tell you that, and let me back up on that, but all constitutional officers are set, their salaries are set, basically in May, before they're elected, for the entire term, right? I think what you're doing now is, as far as the jailer is concerned, we'll have to, I mean, I understand what you, what you've done, that's, that probably needs to be set for both as well, and I probably need to research exactly what we need to do in that situation, okay, because I'm probably not prepared to do that today, because basically, the law is, is once a sale gets set, okay, without any, during the, during the entire term, you can't change any elected official's budget during the four-year, salary during the four-year term, but we'll have to see, let me get the correct language we need in order to address Joel's situation in this situation, right?
We're going by what, what the excellent Supreme Court says, we got to do it, but we still need to put that in the document correctly, in order to determine that.
You want to get it for us?
Yes, yes, I will.
I mean, I don't know, there's any law opinion on...
So you're saying, you're saying, hey, go ahead and make a motion to do a change, yeah, put that?
You know, it's the same as if you were addressing mine, you can't do that, unless there's, unless there's a reason that's good, I mean, I'm just telling you guys, whatever vote that you, that you like, then I'll, but I'll just tell you what...
Let's check, I'll, I'll have them the next meeting, we have it on again, I'll be ready soon. Okay. Uh, number three, road form position, discussion of the...
Are you just doing that?
Where's this addition to the end zone, so they wouldn't put this in?
I got a letter here, I don't know if you got a copy of it or not, Jamie Holdrup, you got to pop that.
I am, uh... The last, the last thing we discussed on road form was, I gave you another name, a prize for road position, and you want that free name that you said was going to take me for $30,000, and, you know, I never presented within lane, and since this is my appointee, I'm going to make a motion to table this, and we look at it, and, which I don't have on my own voting name, but, we need to stand up to my end, to deal with my appointee, and have a discussion.
Well, we've, we've already appointed a comedian, that's what we're acting on.
You, you appointed a comedian, but that's not your position to appoint.
Well, we've, we've got a majority vote on a comedian, because all we're doing is to get this, this letter here to the court.
Okay, okay, you were going to submit me three names, have you got the other two?
I've got one right here.
Okay.
I've got one.
And you're going to submit each other, and I can have a look at them, and get rid of the others.
I need three?
No, I'm going to read, I'm going to have a look at them, and then discuss it. So you went to...
We've already, we've already...
Pardon?
We've already approved change of agenda to discuss this, so...
Okay. That's fine, you want to read your reading?
This letter from Jamie Holdrup, said, Dear Judge and Manager, as we all know, the position of Red County Road Supervisor remains vacant as of this day. One of the primary issues that seems to be in the forefront of this controversy surrounding this matter is the salary, course following benefits due to the financial condition of the county. To remedy the situation, I propose following, with your consent, I will be appointed with the position of Red County Road Supervisor. In addition to taking the role of County Road Supervisor, I will also retain my current position as greater operator, and will perform those duties with feasible and necessary. This will prevent the fiscal court from having feeling to feel my position and adding additional salary to fringe benefits. I will perform the role of County Road Supervisor and Greater Operator at a combined salary of $32,000, plus tactical fringe benefits, by combining those positions at the salary to, at $32,000. This will save the county nearly $75,000 each year, relating to the hard of an outside road supervisor at the precinct requested the salary, when both salary and fringe benefits are taken into consideration. As County Road Supervisor, I will be appointed to drive home vehicles of a county road vehicle, and will only use the vehicle when commuting between home and work, or respond to emergency outside of regular business hours. As County Road Supervisor, no other employee will help me pass or orders to the road crew, unless designated to do so in case of my absence or illness or personal reasons. In order to preserve my career, which should political administration change as a result of the election, I would be, I would be afforded opportunity during the last month of Judge Nobles' administration step down to the position of Greater Operator only. Could not be terminated from the County Road Supervisor position without consent of majority of the fiscal court. After much reflection, I feel the need for both terms will be mutually beneficial to both myself and the county fiscal court. I will take no indepth discussion with each view concerning this matter, as you are as convenient. Your consideration very much appreciated.
Yeah, you know, what they've done with them, all look over and, and do a sound discussion.
You got to remember, we open them whenever they give them this raise, again, constantly we develop a raise, I think, in the rate factory. We only give to Jamie $75,000.
Our proposal would give every county in the whole way $2 more on that. This is, this is not table that one, give them all.
We went a long way for the Lambro, where it's $32,000.
We have, we have.
We've gone a long way.
Sure, Mount Van.
Wow.
If you want to give them about a $2 raise on that...
$2, I'm at the most.
I thought we broke, we just laid them out 32 hours here, back a couple months ago.
A couple months ago, but today we got money.
Here goes, you go ahead and leave that with me, and I'll, I'll look over, get me anything.
You not want to say this?
Not this, my appointee, I told you.
It's just ability to bring the, bring this to the floor.
So, uh...
There's no nomination for the court on road, and there's...
Okay, uh, moving on, number four.
You need, you need to discuss that Ray Patrick too, he needs to give his, or we don't, we don't.
Well, we discussing, we discussing the road, hold on, we're discussing the road one, I consider, I consider it, you leave it in the paper, and we'll get together and talk about it, and I'll make a point in the paper, that's my appointee, I give him. Then move on to the next one, number four, Mitch Smith, uh, I've got one thing, I've got your Mitch Smith salary, $50,000, poetic, plenty, more of your motion, or...
For Mitch Smith, you, Red County Trader, for a full year term, beginning on July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30, 2023, with a classification of the salary exempt, and at an annual salary of $50,000. Code KR is 68010, the county traders select by fiscal court. So that's our call. I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, when we bring it up for vote, I'm going to open up for discussion. What was the previous salary, and what even salary, the average rate of the life trade is, what's your favorite?
I started out at $40,000, and after a year, Jason Richardson, Jay Richardson raised me up to $45,000, and that's why I'm at present.
So you're $45,000, and how many years of experience you got?
I've been here since June 1st, 2013.
Okay, so we got somebody that's been in that position since 2013, making $45,000. What kind of experience does Mitch Smith got in the trader, finding, talking, today I'm working here? Donnie?
We got...
Again, y'all, again, y'all sitting here talking about raises and stuff, and got money.
You give the bridge, open the report.
Yeah, I don't know where y'all think you got about the money, we didn't go from 32 to 40 hour week on my, on my approval, which y'all voted on there, we really came for, 40 hour work week. Y'all got a janitor, a health insurance coordinator, and a DES coordinator on salary. Here we got ladies been traders since 13, and y'all got an early raise, and y'all talking about raises and other things, uh...
Hey, Mitch, could you tell us what you're presented with?
Yeah, I have a bachelor's of science at County University of Kentucky, I have a master's of business administration from Orange State University, and I have been county finance officer for three, four years, I think from 2000, like, probably four or five years, 2011 until the fall of 2016, and I was also, I'm an assistant treasurer for a period of time.
That's ancient. Can I raise the requirement? Requirement is 25 years of age, and have a basically backlord level degree, which you stated you got, recently accredited institution by a level, that's, so Section 3, the requirements are...
So you're making a motion to go ahead and up that salary, $5,000, to the point Mitch, that position for you, in the...
Let me address this, here, while we get, right, but, I'd like Charlie to move out of this. Your salary's set to 45, eight, John Lester agreed, give you $50,000, but he included that in, in the string, is that right? You didn't, you said you didn't...
My salary is $45,000, right now.
I know that, your salary's 45, eight. Right, Charlie?
I hope you're...
Well, that's...
Donnie, it's gone, if you go back and check with the finance officer and get my record, I do know.
It's right here in the line item.
I don't, you're missing that line item, I don't like that.
You got line item, also 30,000 dollars for road form, if you take most of that line item, it'll be in the, some takes you anywhere.
Oh, this year, I was appropriating the condition, or this is what you actually paid, am I right or not?
What you had?
I'm appropriating the condition reported, you submit each and every month, this figure since last fiscal year, this figure has been in this appropriation report, each and every week, is it on there?
Sure, it is on there, 45, eight, but I don't like 45, eight, Donnie.
Why is it on there?
I do not know what's on there, but I don't like...
Who makes out the appropriation report to you?
Uh, well, it comes from the budget that was approved the year before, the 1819 budget.
Did John Lester put, you at $50,000, oh, we didn't agree with that.
I didn't know that's for $50,000.
$50,000 was, was part of the proposal budget, last year, but...
My salary was $50,000, is that what you're saying?
It was proposed, I said it proposed.
I never...
Was it, or was it not?
I don't know, then y'all owe me some money, because I haven't got it, I've only got 45,000.
He put, he put in the training money, Charlie, and you know that.
What now?
The training centers, aren't they, that were part of $5,000?
That was training center.
You told us, it said, you didn't want to go to the...
I have not went to training.
I, I, I...
That's right.
Correct?
But that ain't a part of my salary, that's incentive training, y'all.
That's part, that's reason, we put you up to the $50,000, we agree.
You did not put me up to $50,000, that says 45, eight, that's saved $50,000, y'all.
I'm trying to explain to you.
Well, I'm trying to explain to you.
Eric, I, I didn't check in, if you filed even $45,000 for...
Well, that'd be right, if I was having a chat.
Okay, motion been made, second, or Ray Moore?
Aye.
Kevin Kinter?
Aye.
Gordon? Motion carried. Okay, now, I put this on the agenda, if y'all be here so you can get out, I've got three bids, next thing on the bid, Generation approval of, and then you, being of 4358, PW number 192, and we just got three bids, does anybody else got a bid?
100% big, Mom.
We do have.
We do have.
First one, King's Creek Drill. On, uh, Hunt, John, Hunt Creek, uh, job site one, uh, reference number forty-four two hundred. King's Creek Drill, the bid is fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, next one on the list is Hunt Creek Site two, is twenty-four thousand, ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. The next one on the list is Pambo Road, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. The next one is Press Airport, and it is thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents. The next one is, uh, we got three sites on Quicksand Creek, job site one, is forty thousand, four hundred and one dollars even. Job site two on Quicksand Creek, is fifty-two thousand, sixteen dollars even. Quicksand Creek, uh, site three, is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. The next one is job site on Roar Bridge, and it is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents. Roar Bridge, job site two, is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars even. Round Bottom, is nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. The next one is Smith Branch, it is twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
How much was that just spent?
Well, Smith Branch is twelve thousand, five thirty-nine, sixty-eight. Then Wolf Creek, is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Then Wolf Creek, uh, road site two, is seventeen thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Then it's King Creek. The second bid, Mudcap, and Broken Company. The first one in Hunt Creek, site one, is thirty-nine thousand and a hundred and forty dollars. Site two on Hunt Creek is nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Pambo Road is thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. The next one is Press Airport, it is thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars. The next one is Quicksand Creek, site one, is thirty-six thousand, fifty dollars. The next one is Quicksand Creek, site two, forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Quicksand, site three, is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Roar Bridge, site one, is eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Roar Bridge Road, site two, is twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Round Bottom is seventeen thousand, a hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Smith Branch Road is nine thousand dollars. Wolf Creek Road, site one, is twenty-one thousand dollars even. Wolf Creek Site two is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that's Mud Creek. And the last one, it's King Creek Barbina. Okay, on handle. Hunt Creek Site one is eighty-five thousand dollars. Hunt Creek Site two is thirty-nine thousand dollars. Pambo Road is fifty-one thousand dollars. Press Airport is fifty-six thousand dollars. Quicksand Creek is sixty thousand dollars. Site one, Quicksand Creek Site two, seventy-one thousand dollars. Quicksand Creek Site three is forty-two thousand dollars. Roar Bridge Road, site one, is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Roar Bridge Site two is forty-one thousand dollars. Round Bottom is thirty thousand dollars. Smith Branch is twenty-seven thousand dollars. Wolf Creek Road, site one, is thirty-seven thousand dollars. Wolf Creek Road, Wolf Creek Road, site two, is thirty-two thousand dollars.
What's Smith Branch Road?
On which bid? The one you just read?
Just Smith Branch Road.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand. On handle?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, what we do, and I was talking to, to him yesterday, coming up your bid sheet, uh, you wanna go ahead and give who the lowest bid is on? Yeah, on each, on each side. And what we do on each side, we have to look at our financing, again, needed jobs, uh, shouldn't been done probably a couple of years ago, but we won't be able to do them all, because we have to pay them upfront. Uh, when we do get these guys to do these jobs, we'll be able to pay them when they get done, and we just have to wait on their money. You know, we just got two thirteen, we got another twenty-five or thirty, don't we, Charlie? So, who had the lowest bid on Hunt Creek? Site one, Hunt Creek Site one and two. Okay. Site one is thirty-nine, one thirty. Okay, hold on, let me stay here. And I don't know if we can take up time and, and do this, but I want to do it for the record, so. One Creek drop one, and site two, one can head it? Okay, how about on Pambo Road? Mudcap. Mudcap and Hunt Creek, and Pambo, okay, how about Press Airport? Mudcap. Quicksand Creek, site one. Mudcap. Quicksand Creek, site two. Okay, site three. Mudcap. Roar Bridge. Hey, yeah, Mudcap. Huh? No, Mudcap. Okay, Roar Bridge Site two. Round Bottom. Smith Branch. Mudcap. Wolf Creek. Mudcap. And Mudcap on the way. Okay, I'll get with you, Donnie, you got the bid on all of them, uh, maybe we'll sit down and see what's easier for you, where we got three sites together, two sites together, two sites together, we're looking, try to keep right that area till we get something done, so. Get with me and we'll look, I'll get with Charlie, go up to finance and we've got, and, uh, I appreciate your bid, appreciate your long bid, and appreciate the other guy's bidding too. Thank you. Okay, uh, King, uh, Mudcap Construction has got the low bid on all these, on consideration, a motion to approve, uh, according to our budget that we have, to be able to pay for them, again, these projects, uh, it'll be a lot of money to pay out halfway a year on money, and and it does run into here sometimes, so, on consideration, motion to approve, give Mudcap the low bid on these projects and, and as funding available. Okay. You get that? Roy Darrell made a motion, second?
Second.
Bill Tenter, second? Uh, Donnie Bush, Roy Darrell, Ray Moore. Bill Tenter, Donnie Bush. Okay, consideration approval of finance complatement and appropriate, appropriate revenue condition report. Say more? We have second?
Say more.
Say, Bill Tenter? Roy Darrell, Ray Moore. Mudcap, Donnie Bush. Motion, Curry. Consideration approval of budget transfer.
Motion.
Motion, Bill Tenter? Tenter, Ray Moore? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill Tenter? Donnie Bush? Consideration approval for interim transfer.
Motion.
Ray Moore, second?
Second.
Tenter? Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Donnie Bush. Consideration approval of vendor claim list, intended order claim list?
Motion.
Will you make a Tenter? Will you ever second? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill Tenter? Donnie Bush? Donnie Bush. Consideration and approval for the second reading and adoption of budget amendment number eight, and we'll let Chris Riley read, read that. An ordinance relating to the annual budget and amendment there, whereas Breath County, Kentucky is realized unbudgeted receipts bid ordained by Breath County of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Okay, motion.
Motion.
Second? Bill Tenter? You second that? You say, okay. Ray Moore? Bill Tenter? Donnie? Donnie Bush? Okay, consideration approval of second reading and adoption of budget amendment number nine. Ordinance relating to annual budget and amendment there, whereas Breath County, Kentucky is realized unbudgeted receipts bid ordained by Breath County of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
I got a question. Question, amendment number nine, borrowed money of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, is that worth a share?
Yes.
Okay, motion.
Motion.
Ray Moore made a motion?
Second.
Bill Tenter? Say more? Bill? Donnie? Donnie Bush? Consideration approval of the first reading and adoption of a budget amendment number ten. Ordinance relating to the annual budget and amendment there, whereas Breath County, Kentucky is realized unbudgeted receipts bid ordained by Breath County of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
I think it, uh, the word adoption should be taken out of the code, it's on the first reading.
On the correction, on that, please, approval of the first reading, budget amendment number ten. Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
That you will? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Phil? Donnie? Tenter? Consideration and approval for county road aid agreement and resolution for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Motion.
Okay, we'll read it first. Fiscal Court of Breath County, resolution adopting and approving their execution of the county road aid plot program contract between fiscal court and Commonwealth of Kentucky transportation, and up the rule in municipal aid for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty nineteen, as provided in the county statute, considering all road and streets referred to therein as being a county road system. Do you want to make a motion? Ray Moore?
Bill? Second.
Hey? Bill? Donnie? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Okay, consider approval to adopt Devon Lane into the county road plan?
Motion. Second.
Okay, Donnie? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Okay, discussion and approval payment of C R A, emergency payment, to Mudcap Construction in an amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, and this was for the short pork, uh, project at Houston. Okay, Roy Darrell made a motion? Second? That you will? Bill, second? Donnie? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill Tenter? Motion, Curry. Okay, considering approval of the first reading of legal proceeding to adopt Plum Creek and Ford Lane into the county road plan.
Proceeds road plan.
Uh, Ford Lane is on Lower, Lower Quinn Road. Uh, Plum Creek Bridge is hanging here, not getting. Is Plum Creek in District Two? Yeah, okay, where's that at?
It's on Lower Quinn, to the right, we start at the hill.
Okay. Okay. Roy Darrell made a motion, we have second?
Second.
Okay, Ray Moore?
Ah.
Bill? Donnie? Donnie Bush?
Both of them are in.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, Ford Lane, and Plum Creek, I didn't know where we were there. Uh, consideration and approval for Reggie Banks to be Breath County Advocate and Agent of the Federal Management Agency, like it's just stuff they do every year, and that's what she's been handling, and we just need a crew to point her to that tradition, to do that task.
Motion, second.
That Donnie said? I, Ray Moore? Bill? Donnie? Donnie Bush? Okay, the next on the list, uh, we actually already done one, but we're gonna have to reapprove it, but the first one on the list, the consideration approval of South Fork Gelfview water by the project to be paid in the amount, to watch you go under gym, and it's not right, I met Paul Niff with the address at just this morning, they came up with a new figure of one nineteen, four thirty-seven, seventy-three.
Judge, if you don't mind, we were talking last night to the state, and, uh, they, they revised some things, and the number there is, they changed some. They can change some things slightly, and I've got a new requisition, and it's a hundred and nineteen, four thirty-seven, seventy-three. The man at the state, Bill Overman, that's approving them, he's approved these numbers, and we'd ask you to approve that. And then, secondly, is the requisition that we had a special call meeting on. Uh, he decided about three o'clock this afternoon, he didn't like that either, and so we now have... We, we finally started sending him first, saying what it is, so... Last night and this morning, we were emailing back and forth, and we'll need to pass another resolution on that one as well. But the first one would be requisition number six, for Elkview for a total of a hundred and nineteen, four thirty-seven, seventy-three. That would be the first motion.
Motion.
Motion? Say it. And change? Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? In the next, in the next one, we, what he...
It would actually be requisition number five, that was approved in a special call meeting, uh, for the Elkview. That requis, the previous requisition number five would be voided, and we would have a new one for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. That's about six thousand dollars less than the last one, they... We, frustrating for me, we've been calculating it, using it the same way all this time, and then for some reason, he'll consider it's not good this time, but... So, and I've got copies.
Okay.
Motion.
Say it. Bill, make more? Ray Moore? Uh, Donnie? Donnie Bush? Ray Moore?
Thank you.
Dan, I need you to sign it before you get away with that one.
Before you leave, I'll have you sign it.
Okay, the next, the consideration approval of the Breath County Emergency Plan. Don't have a copy of that, and I guess that's something they just... They don't hurt the track, but they just move it around, and just...
Motion.
Pushing the rate? Say it. Say who? Donnie Bush? Ray, uh, Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? Donnie Bush? Motion carried. Consideration approval to accept the interim corporate agreement for East Kentucky Region 911 Board. For approval, Judge Hippeau will decide the set agreement for the 911.
Motion.
Bill, change? Roy Darrell? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? Donnie Bush? Motion carried. We'll put this one here down to the last, just go ahead, uh, next one is consideration approval of playing Louise Howard remaining. A five hundred dollars for the profit was obtained from the Elkview project. Uh, I guess I just made a word this, about probably a month ago. Your original agreement was for so much property, she added some more, added some more property to it. And y'all told her to give her five hundred dollars, and she gave us the deed, and everything we got, all, all in the deed, but we need to back up and pay her five hundred dollars... Uh, on the agreement price that you all made originally with the person that property.
Motion. Say it.
Bill, change? Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Consideration approval to pay annuity for Roy Darrell's training, Donnie Bush's training, and Becky Curtis' training. I guess the two previous ones, uh... They got signed, and I just kinda went back on the minutes, and, um... When funds come available, go ahead and pay, uh, the annuity to Roy Darrell, Donnie, and Becky. Motion.
Well, thank Roy Darrell and Donnie probably to understand from that motion.
Understand the order, we should have, oh, no, maybe we shouldn't. Do you understand the order?
We went back in, I don't want the training to tend, or I don't think it would be, it won't be considered real, I don't think. But I'd like when you and Roy, uh, Ray got yours, uh, they come in, I signed it, and you went ahead and assumed it was, but... I went back in the previous minute, when, when, I didn't go back in Jason, but when John List was in there, y'all were dating, uh... Uh, approved the thing, uh, and send it.
Right, who cares if it is the same order? He can just like, in the program.
So, I'm gonna make, I'll make the motion, like...
Say it.
Okay, here's Donnie? Uh... County Road Department update, uh... Everything seemed to be going good, and we've got a lot, a lot of road done, uh... One grader, I, I have elected to keep, with two jumping around here and there, I've elected to keep a grader. And it's almost been in District Two now for probably two months. And Bryant Street up there, it was a mess, Freeman Fork was a mess, so... I've, I've elected just to keep them in there till they get the road fixed, and move on to the next. And I know we got roads that's in bad shape other places, but, uh... Bill's change was District Two, uh, same way with Quick Sand Creek, that we've had a grader in that area for probably a month, and then being there for... Another couple, three weeks, but, once we get done, uh... When he comes out of District Two, and he probably does that today, he's gonna get in District Three, and we'll try to keep a grader on each end of the county until we get the road fixed. Uh, I know people from Bryant Street call and talk about how money is, but when you pull the ditch and try to build a road, they will get money, but, uh... We go back over and grade it, and people up in Quicksand, uh... They're tickled to death, and that tickled me to death, I was on the court for four years, and... I don't think I got a compliment out of that part of the country, but, uh... They, they've done it twice and reached out, so that's expensive to have been, and they appreciate it, and, um... But it, when you look at a district, it won't get the money, I mean... Ellis and Nick wants to be a lot higher, up on Macbode, and up, up in... And Spring Fork, and, uh... And it'd be the same way we get these other districts, so... So, uh... But that's kinda updated about, seemed like everything's going good, I go over and give everybody the orders, and, um... It's a little bit hard to keep up with the gravel, but me and Reggie have come up with another plan, and, uh... We had a couple on the gravel that hadn't been accounted for, and I'm, we've all went through, but I'm thinking to the town, to the county grove, and they took it directly to the road, and, uh, so... We just, uh, we check on it, so... But everything seemed to be going good, uh... Actually gave them a Easter appreciation dinner the other day, and everybody seemed to enjoy it, and, uh... I just wanna treat people, uh... The way I like to be treated. You know, that's not a plan to throw in there for a year to, to do that, and, uh... That's kinda updated, or we, that's everything seemed to be going through the courthouse.
Grass cover.
Uh, grass cover, and, and we'll, we'll discuss that when we go in here, uh, we've got personnel in here and all that, if we get everything done, we're gonna discuss it, but, uh... It's hard to pull anybody off, we had a little bridge crew with Calvin and Ronnie Fitch and, uh, Chris Stamper. Uh, we've got two bridges completed, they're actually pulling a horn, I think, for the next bridge, uh, we doing two in Quicksand. Just got those one up at, uh, Robinson Fork. Uh, put Garberella on another bridge, and then we went, and they're working hard. Calvin sent me a thing on the Quicksand Creek Bridge, it was estimated for thirteen thousand some dollars. When everything was said and done, we were at ten thousand some dollars. So, on the eighty-twenty match, we got that bridge built, and that's paying, and I'm just sure, sure, ten times almost.
They are making one bridge, so wow.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, whatever it takes. If you get over twenty foot, it gets weight laying on it.
I'm listening for two years.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I, uh... I don't think you can pass on a little bridge. Uh, I don't know about Quicksand, but it's pretty wide road, he may have made it, that by Robinson Fork, it's pretty much a long way down. I mean, it's plenty wide, look at you, I don't know if two cars, uh... And the way I drive, I think it makes some money in the morning. They, and, and they look really good, I mean, when I've been before, and I'm not talking about who's done it before, uh... I don't want to start another bridge crew, we've got several bridges that need to be done if we can get... And this is already April, and in June, if we can get the fourth, these bridges done, I think we're gonna, Craig's gonna let us back up and try to get money we missed out on. And he's already got ninety-two thousand market bridge he dropped up to submit to, when he tells us to submit, so... But again, it takes men, and we, we pretty much backed down what we got, but, uh... I feel everything going real beautiful.
Um, that's it, Coast Fairness Request Number Two. There's one in the packet, but that's not the right one. And, uh, that needs approval for us to take that money, it's twenty-five thousand, that closes it out, twenty-five, four fifty-five, fifty. And that closes it out, and we can pay that toward our medical collections that belong to them twice.
And that's another, I don't know how many people was in here that were in their last meeting, but, uh... I got a call here one day that we owe five hundred and sixty-three dollars to collection, they set up another conference call a fall on Monday, it went from five something to seven something. Uh, we requested the name for the list, and, uh... They just tell us the invoice, and it, they was charged for Eston County, Wolf County, other counties, people that, they didn't know who they were.
Million thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, yeah. So, uh... When they finally done the analysis, it come to four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I think it was, and Crystal was in the mid, middle of, uh... Reducing it down to nine percent, if a hospital gets a payment, if you got Medicaid, that's the most they charge, is nine percent. So, we had that at four thirty-nine, actually offered, uh, offering forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars per settlement, they called back and went up, we had an agreement with, uh... The hospital for thirty percent. Uh, Crystal checked into it, and Freeport, Freeport took the ownership to sign a contract for us. So, we went on to get contract, so... Crystal took and revised all the ones that we could revise, and it come to one forty-something, and she ended up, they took one month's loan with, I wish I had a number. Less than twenty, less than thirty thousand, it was twenty-nine thousand some dollars, and that have everything paid up, and this was going back fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Joel kinda touched a little bit on a program that he started, some of these were over a thousand dollars. Since we paid them, we'll submit that into a catastrophic fund, and they reimbursed us back the difference of what we paid over a thousand dollars, so... Uh, I have to commend y'all for working, working it hard, and they have to try to get through, play and produce, and... And, and, and when you see them, definitely appreciate them, uh, working that, 'cause they really work hard, and I appreciate them, um...
You know, Chris, what did it charge?
Everybody, not just, I mean, uh... And breed it, I mean, uh... Everybody, everybody from top to bottom, I mean, it's been... It's been, the last month's have been flavors, I mean, uh... The first two months, one bunch of flavors, I'll just tell you, when you collect the agency calling, you're telling me, you owe five hundred some thousand dollars, and you don't sleep during. But, uh... You know, and getting in the sleep, and, uh, working, and, uh... But I appreciate everybody that, that we are on payroll, I mean, I mean that. So, that's updated, so, uh, here, here's, uh, something that we didn't have on agenda, but, uh, I'm going to consideration approval to take, uh, this first, uh, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents... Uh, of the Coast Fairness Line Island project to pay for the medical bills?
Motion.
Bill, change?
Say it.
Ray Moore? Ray Moore?
Say it.
Bill? Donnie? Donnie Bush? Motion carried. It is eleven o'clock, does anybody got anything on this level list, and here, does anybody got anything, okay?
This is a reminder about the, if y'all wanna go in and appropriate the money, if they go over.
Okay, we were not done, I got highlighted, y'all, we don't want to get on the bottom. Uh, we got election coming up, and I need a motion of consideration of approval to appropriate, in this first, the funds of twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars... For the May election of, May the twenty-first, twenty-nineteen election, and reasons why we won't have another court meeting before the election, and... Those officers, right, they wanna pay when they get done that thing, so...
That's officers and election.
Yeah, everybody, anything doing election, and that was so long. Twenty-one thou, twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, twenty thousand. Next, for all the workers, election officers.
That's eighty-four officers, we have, um, nine officers, and people that pack the machines in and out, and then they close the election houses.
Motion for Roy Darrell?
Say it.
Say it, Bill, change? Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? Okay. Uh, y'all more welcome to leave if you want to, or you sit around, we wanna discuss personnel a little bit, and they can session, I'll make them, uh, two of them. To go in and say, to session, to discuss personnel. Roy Darrell? Bill, change? Roy Darrell? Thank y'all for coming out, got enough for Elkview, uh... Think there's other people, people, I'm going to go in, I'll go in. Uh, Ray Moore? Uh, Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? We were discussing personnel, and, uh... We're gonna try to put some someone working together, uh, if it's temporary. Each district is gonna pick one personnel, and, uh... We do the computer, back work on, drug test, and, uh... And, uh, try to help, not just cut the weeds, but build on bridges, whatever we can use on that, uh, we're kinda shorthand over there for, uh, bridge firm, and, and, uh... I consider motion to approve each one of us, so, pick one person, Ray Moore?
Motion.
Say it. Say it, Donnie Bush? Donnie Bush? Uh, consider motion for a German?
Motion. Say it.
Motion by Bill, change? Say it, Donnie Bush? Donnie Bush? Roy Darrell? Ray Moore? Bill, change? Again, like everybody for Canada, um... And he says he's ten minutes out, ten minutes ago, so that's worth our first, James later be here, if y'all can go learn, and, uh... We'll see you there, once we go up there.
We have friends, like.
Oh, we have, uh... What was that, Long Beach, and they wanna provide sandwiches, and chips, and pasta, everybody, y'all?
Yeah, Patrick, yeah.
Elkview. We got ten.